He went into his drawer and got a regular tube saw and wrote Joe on it with a marker and hung it on the mantle. And so we've hung it up for every year since, just to...
Oh, gosh.
That's his personality.
Well, welcome everybody. Let's go ahead and call our meeting to order for the regular meeting for the City Council of City of Perry and begin with roll call.
Okay, Cold Iron.
Here.
Rutt.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
White.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Worthy.
Here. All right, we have Quorum. Gloria, would you offer invocation for us?
We just come to be here tonight with praise and thanksgiving in our hearts, thanking you for the rain, thanking you for this day, thanking you for the opportunity to serve you and this position that we're in tonight. And we confidently and boldly draw near to the throne of grace tonight, asking you to help us make right decisions for the welfare of Perry. We're doing our part by becoming involved and we trust you for wisdom and guidance. Give us favor, we ask it in the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Gloria. All right, let's begin with item number one, our consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay, let's have roll call.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rutt.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Yes. All right, jumping on down to item number four, so this is comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the city agenda. Tonight, we actually do have someone here that's going to present to us. We have Dr. Chris Fisher, and so if you'd like to come on up, we'll invite you up. Typically, we usually allow just three minutes, but feel free to take your time. You can have more than three minutes.
Oh, no, no, I, uh, I'll keep it brief. Appreciate everyone for having me here this evening. So my name is Chris Fisher. I am a physician. I cover here regularly and have been doing so for the past year, year and a half. I'm currently Chief of Staff in Paul's Valley where I hold a more permanent position, and I do cover several ERs throughout Oklahoma, in addition to in the past being a hospitalist for the VA system as well, so some federal experience. My purpose for being here today is, over the course of me being here and working with the nurses and medical staff, hospital community here, I've grown to have some, you know, degree of investment in this community. With the change as far as Stillwater Medical Center's presence here in the community, specifically with the hospital, I saw an opportunity where we could maintain a more robust medical presence in the, within the Perry community. And that will be pertaining to the inpatient portion of the hospital. Specifically, I see a very, very large need for mental health. So, mental health in the United States is one of the most underserved specialties there is in medicine. Oklahoma has recognized it, and we even see now in Oklahoma City, a large hospital that's going to be built, well, a larger hospital that's going to be dedicated to mental health specifically. I believe it's about 60 beds, maybe a little bit more, and it's going to be downtown Oklahoma City. I believe one of the larger hospital systems is sponsoring it. But that still leaves Oklahoma grossly underserved for mental health. The most recent data was in 2021 that showed that there was approximately 1.2 million Oklahomans that suffered from mental health, 90% of which went untreated. And, you know, that could be a majority of reasons why they went untreated, but certainly, lack of access was one of the most profound reasons. So, through my work, I've noticed that rural hospitals can serve a niche role in addressing this mental health shortage. And here in Perry, we have about 40 beds, 35, 40 beds, that we may use to address this need. The, my interest isn't, you know, I saw, you know, beds available, we should just put mental health there. We're actually implementing the same exact model in Paul's Valley. We have a 43-bed hospital in Paul's Valley. And we're working with several leaders in the mental health field, specifically in Oklahoma, that have had presences both in Western Oklahoma and Eastern Oklahoma, to facilitate that process. It's a very, very simple process. You get approval from Medicare governing bodies, and then you subsequently get approval from the state once you're open. Given the experience that we have working with us, both on the clinical side and then on the administrative portion, I don't, I don't foresee this being unsuccessful. There's a significant need, and we're here to fill it. As far as how, how's that going to affect Perry? Well, you know, some of the obvious things, it's going to bring jobs, it's going to bring stability here for a lot of families. It's going to, it's going to, you know, make Perry more of a household name, especially to healthcare providers. Large facilities, Integris, Mercy, OU, they're always looking to transfer out their mental health patients because there's a lack of beds available, and utilizing rural hospitals is definitely what is done. From my experience, mainly in rural hospitals, I've transferred patients from probably as young as five years old all the way up to 100-plus. I've transferred them across the state, and I've transferred them to different states, Texas, Missouri, Kansas, all in search of a bed. So, sometimes we run across older individuals that specifically need geriatric psychiatry, that's a kind of a niche within a niche field, and then, of course, pediatric and adolescent psychiatry. So, not saying we're going to serve all of those needs, but definitely try to, try to alleviate some of the, some of that burden, and I think that Perry is uniquely suited to do so. So, my purpose this evening was to hopefully gain approval from the city council to pursue that, or at least gain an endorsement to pursue that in conjunction with the, the bodies that I, I need to pursue, in hopes of utilizing the inpatient portion of the hospital to bring mental health here to Perry.
Do you have questions for Chris?
Yeah, so what kind of staff professionals would we need to add for that kind of clientele?
So, within nursing, nurses come out of nursing school with exposure to all fields. They, kind of on the job, they obtain training, but there's also courses where they can gain specific knowledge as far as the field that they're going to be in. So, getting nurses that may have specific training to deal with mental health is necessary. CNAs are just below nurses, they, they have less schooling, and those people are necessary for activities of daily living and so on. More, more skilled, you get into the therapists that are necessary, as well as, of course, the staff psychiatrists. An aspect of the mental health that we definitely hope to address is substance abuse, and in that case, you, you need like a hospitalist physician with a kind of a more intricate knowledge of medicines that are used to control withdrawal. So, I like to staff these units with greater ratios as far as less patients to a great, a greater number of nursing staff, just because this type of unit does have the potential for someone to get a little bit more agitated than a typical med, medical surgical patient, so.
So, would this organization want to rent that portion of the hospital and establish a business here?
Yes, ma'am.
And would they also provide outpatient, like, for instance, someone with ADHD? I know we have grown, like, some utilized that, but I just was wondering if that would be that provisional?
That would definitely be something that we would be interested in pursuing. We, we have the means to implement inpatient immediately. Outpatient kind of would necessitate a psychiatrist presence here. However, psychiatry is one of the fields in medicine that does lend itself very, very well to telemedicine and that platform. So, you know, is that something that we can facilitate, a telemedicine platform where we get psychiatrists present here to fulfill outpatient services? And that's, that's a very, very possible or likely possibility, so. But as far as what we could immediately implement, it's going to be the inpatient services, and we may be able to reach the greater, greatest number of people because people would be transferred from, you know, any portion of Oklahoma to come to this facility.
I'm really interested in the mental health. Do you think there is a great need for it?
I was raised across the street from Griffin Memorial Hospital in Norman. That was my playground, but I used to visit with the patients, you know. And I just fell in love with them because they're just precious people that just needed help, and even as a little girl, I just was really intrigued by the help that they received and, and how people made such a difference in their life, just kids visiting with them and, and things. And then, I see what drug abuse has done. I've worked with several entities with drug abused people, and it causes a lot of mental health. They're not bad people, they just get caught and stuff.
No, absolutely. So, that's, we want to try to be there for people in, in a more difficult time in their life, and so if no one's there to fill that hole, then it can often lead to more serious consequences like suicide, and so, of course, which would be one of the top things we try to prevent.
So, this would be affiliated with Stillwater Medical Center?
No, no, I have no affiliation with Stillwater Medical Center. It would be a, lack of a better term, like a private entity, but there would be no affiliation.
And what we do, what would initiate someone to be transferred to Perry if this was, this facility was here?
So, when, I, I cover Wagner Hospital. Let's say I cover Wagner, they have an extremely robust mental health program. Well, let's say they were full, and I'm looking to try to transfer a pediatric patient or geriatric patient to a psychiatry unit. You can call one of several services. Here, it's Grand Lake, over in Eastern Oklahoma, I think it's called Green Country, and they have with them a list of facilities exactly that accept patients, and they go through and they say, we've got patient so-and-so, they're this many years old, this is their condition, these are the services that, you know, this is their preliminary diagnosis and what we can anticipate them needing. And they just reach out to the services to find an open bed, so. But with that being said, I have connections with probably greater than 20 facilities in Oklahoma, and with those connections alone, I could, you know, let my physician friends know, or my leadership friends know, and then we may get kind of an advantage as far as referral base.
Along with that, Randy, when Derek, Sam and I went and met with Stillwater Medical, we, we did talk about the mental health aspect of, you know, using that building, and they said that, that, that's a need. They said if you had that sort of facility in, in the hospital, it would be full.
So, would it take some construction changes?
Take two, two pieces of construction. There would have to be a locked door that's lock-in, or a key-in and key-out on both wings. So, I don't know how familiar everyone is with the hospital, but it's constructed such that you walk in a main entrance, and then there's a kind of a right and a left wing, and then the central nurses station. So, we would keep that, and we would just put two doors, lock-in and lock-out, and on either side of the door, there would have to be a desk for, a staffed desk for emergency responses. So, you don't have to go through a locked door to, you know, address an emergency, but limited modifications. Of course, if we're treating patients with suicide, we would have to modify the rooms such that there's nothing that could be used as a weapon or to harm themselves. And then the beds are actually very low to the ground, and kind, they're, they're as simple construction as you can get, basically just plywood base, about eight inches tall, and then a mental health-approved mattress, so.
And then, sure, it's hard to say, but is there an average length of stay that somebody like this would have for?
That is very difficult to say. I, I would anticipate an average length of stay to be somewhere between five to 10 days. However, in the facilities that I do staff with mental health units, like Mayor Wortham said, they're constantly full. So, as soon as a bed opens up, there's another person that's, that's there to take advantage of it.
Yeah, in our meeting with Stillwater Medical, they did make a comment that it's hard to find a place to send mental health patients.
And it's Medicaid-funded?
Medicaid does have a, does have a program in place to fund, fund their patients, so, you know, just, it is what it is. Many, many of our mental health patients, you know, are, are indigent, and so they do rely on the Medicaid service, and I haven't run into any issues as far as payer source.
And how quickly are you wanting to do this?
I would, so, we would be limited as far as how quickly we could get a license to operate. So, I was hoping that the, there was, there was a license associated with the hospital just in and of itself, but there isn't. I think it's solely, like, Stillwater Medical Center has a license. We would have to apply for a license, and that process can take six to eight months. However, I've had luck with getting things expedited where there's an extraordinary need. So, there is the potential for a call to Medicare, CMSS, and petitioning a, an expedited license, so. But I, but, you know, when you rely on other entities and other people, you operate on their schedule, so.
All right, any other questions? All right, Dr. Fisher, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
All right, so continue on with item number five, proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. So, again, we have any proclamations?
Not this one.
Yeah, or commendations?
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to our council reports. Scott, Gloria, do you guys have anything for us?
We'd just like to say that the council was well-represented last night at the community Thanksgiving service, and I thought that was really a great thing for people to, to see that the council was involved spiritually. I'm a tad quorum.
Almost. Curtis, Joe?
You know, really, the only thing I have that people have brought up, or they're still talking about that street light, which I talked to Christie a while ago on, and so I guess there is some work going on on that. Or at least they're checking that out to know what they need to do next. And that's, that's honestly all I have. I mean, I have noticed that the, the five mini-houses that are going up, I mean, I've noticed they're all different colors now, you know, like, they, they, they're starting to look a little more individualized. But other than that, I don't have anything.
Joe?
I don't have anything, so.
Randy, Dinette?
I had someone approach me about the speed down Cal between Sixth and Seventh. And, and I, I hope I told them correctly in that the, the speed limit, unless it is not marked, is 25 in the city limits. Is that not correct?
I believe it's 30.
Is it 30? It's not 25?
Brian's not here.
One time Brian's not here. I think it's 30. I'm not sure.
I, I thought it was 25.
Anyway, I, I, and.
I might be the one going too fast.
That's how fast Derek goes.
But, you know, right there at Sixth and Cal, you're coming from 40 miles an hour, I think, right there. And so I, I mean, what do you need to put, like, what, what would quantify or justify putting a children-at-play sign or, or where, where do we place the? I haven't driven around to look and see, but I have seen it coming in, but I don't remember how, what the mileage was, that unless marked that the speed limit is yada, yada, yada. How, where all do we have that? Is that just, like, going, burr coming in, and I, that's the only one that I can recall seeing.
There are children at play signs on Boundary, I mean, right beside my house, and that's because they used to travel that road really fast.
Yeah, but I don't know. I just, I don't think people realize that the speed limit, if it's not marked, is 25, not 40.
I noticed on.
Between Sixth and Seventh?
Sixth Street going to Cal is 35.
Are we 77?
Yeah.
So, I don't know if it changed it, like, if that's. If that's us or then.
This is our Cal between Sixth and Seventh.
It's 35.
Yeah, there's stop signs in each, each end, so I was wondering, okay, somebody's going to go, you know. If you're really gunning it, I, I told them that I would mention it, and just so everybody knows, there is a speed limit in, in town.
What is, so there's not a marked speed limit on that side, on that stretch of road?
No, there's no parking signs because of the casino, but there's no speed limit or children-at-play or no other sign on that. Of course, you can't put children at pay, play at every street now, at this just.
There is a baseball field there.
Do what?
There's a baseball field, correct?
Says you're coming around Highway 77, and then going on to Cal. There's no speed sign going there. All right.
People just need to pay attention.
Take a look at it?
I've had a couple of people approach me, and this is further back, and it just took them a while to digest what we talked about, but I've had several people just, and not necessarily give me a plan, but are concerned about what we, when we talked about doing something with Jay Donovan. I almost felt like that was a historical piece of property, and we need to be very careful what we did with it. I just assured them we hadn't made no decisions yet, and that it was just something we were discussing.
Right. Ideally, we'd like to do something with it.
Right.
Because right now, it's just kind of a, it's just a grass field.
Yeah.
You know, whether we turn it in, you know, further develop it into a park, or utilize it some other way, it's kind of open for discussion. All right, Sam, Derek?
I, I don't have any fingers.
All right. Kind of continuing on, what about from our committees that we have? We'll start off with a hospital committee. You guys have anything?
I didn't get a meeting invitation this week. Did you?
I don't.
I don't think they met.
They had one this, this week.
Didn't they just finalize moving some things around?
They had, last week, they moved some, moved some things around internal. It was minimal, I think.
Yeah, it was like a med cart and, you know.
There was some, some walls that had, just some rooms had to change, a little bit of the dimensions to make everything fit that they wanted to put in there.
Did just get notice that it does post that the speed limit is 30 unless otherwise posted.
I wasn't going to speed limit.
All right, how about our committee that we formed not too long ago, our zoning, our planning committee?
We, we met, I believe we won't meet again until, well, our, our code enforcers out, had a baby, so. But, so we planned around that, but we, we discussed planned unit development.
PUD.
PUD. And trying to get something back in front of, planning in here as quickly as possible, and that, to, to, to help, help with that, and help, help any unique scenarios that pop up in between now and the time that we can get back with the actual zone.
All right. I believe that's all of our committees.
We had the huge tarrel addition.
Drainage.
Oh, drainage, that's right.
We had a meeting with Matt Code to discuss, we're going to move forward on the property that we just purchased down there at the end of it to put some drainage in there, so we can get that water out of it. So, I think they're moving forward with, kind of get everything ready to start on that.
Nice.
Going to shoot some numbers and things, right?
We're waiting on a survey.
Good deal. And so we've closed on everything, right? We're, time with all that. Okay. Good deal. All right, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to item number six, crafting city manager remarks.
Well, I just want anybody to know, we have, the next recycle will be December 9th or something like that. It's, it'll be first, that first Saturday. Then we won't have another one until January, until it all starts over again, due to the holidays, November and December, we'll only have one day. November and December, we only have one day of recycle. It just seems to be picking up now since it's got a little cooler. It has slowed down just a little bit. And with the holidays, maybe we'll get a little bit more pickup again. But I want to thank Sammy, her and her son quite often come. Actually, I wasn't able to be at the last one, and my husband actually went without me. I was very impressed. Patty opened it up for me at that time, and it's been going pretty good. It sounds like the campfire is going to be volunteering here pretty soon on it as well. I do want to make the announcement that Ben is here with us tonight for other reasons too, but I have named Ben as our acting fire chief, and will take over officially come March 1st. And Ben has done a tremendous job since Russell's been out, and he has stepped up in there and taken over, and with the Department of Labor staff, they've almost got all that stuff taken care of. He has just been, gave it 110%, and I could not thank him enough for what he has done in his role as the acting fire chief right now. He is really, as they say, you wouldn't even know that somebody was gone. He's done a fabulous job up there. I really don't have much to say. I will say our holiday hours, I guess, we will be closing at noon Wednesday so that we can have our in-house little Thanksgiving, which is getting smaller and smaller. And then we'll be closed Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday, and then we will get some hours for the rest of the holiday posted on the door and on Facebook. If you have a smart meter, not smart meter, but a smart thermostat, you have been notified that there's a new program out there. I don't know if anybody remembers OMPA talking about the adjustments. It'll be basically somebody else's control of your thermostat. We've actually had people reach out to us. They want to join. Unfortunately, they are not with OMPA, but they have a smart meter, so they have to contact their people and let them know that they want to opt into this program. But it's been a very busy last couple of weeks, but other than that, everything's been going pretty smooth. I guess nobody's told me any different anyway. Is there anything anybody else for me? Thank you.
All right. Well, since we have Ben here as well, let's, let's jump down to item 15. Now, Ben doesn't have to wait until we get through everything else, because I believe him and Savannah will be here waiting just for this item at the end. Item 15 is consider authorizing the filling of positions of firefighter and animal control officer.
Appreciate you moving that up for me. Again, appreciate the opportunity, Christie, thank you for your remarks. But with me moving up, it's going to open up position two higher for the suppression personnel. So we're looking forward to now, is we'll go ahead and open that up and get that process rolling. It's a lengthy process. By the time we get him tested, sent into the pension office, so the quicker we can get that process going, the better we're going to be.
How many open positions do you guys have? Just the one, or?
Currently, one right now. We're still working on the paramedic positions. Working on that. Maybe have some potentials there. When Cody does move up, he's going to go from the suppression side to the animal side. That's probably going to be around March, so within that time period, we're going to be actually be about two hires, the one we're looking for now and then replace him. But I don't want to move him up until we're ready to, we're confident we have where we need to be on the suppression side, so.
Any questions for Ben? Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Our animal control officer right now is out on medical. FMLA states that one, it's a key employee, basically someone that has a job that can't easily just let slide for a little while. You can actually, you're only guarantee them a position, not their position. They still get a job, but you don't have to guarantee the same position. I'm sure right now, when he will be back, his health is not real great. Savannah Riley has stepped up, and she is actually doing it seven days a week right now. She is out there every day feeding and watering and taking care of the animals before she goes to the library and spends all day there. She has really stepped up, but we do need to get somebody in there so we can give Savannah a break. And we just, you know, we do have, I think, Brian said that he's had two people already contact him that they'd be interested in the position, so one of them is a girl that we hired for the part-time position once before, and she wants to come back and be full-time. And then I think there was somebody else that had came up to him and said that he would be interested in fulfilling that position as well.
So the animal control officer that is on the medical leave is being paid by insurance or whatever?
He just used up all his sick leave, and so he will actually be from this point on without pay. Because when you know in the FMLA, you use up what vacation or sick leave that you have available. Well, he didn't have very much. And so then he would be responsible for his insurance premiums, but. There will be no pay from that.
Yeah, this would be split up into two different motions.
Yeah.
One for each.
Motion to authorize opening a suppression position for firefighter?
Second. Okay. Have roll call on that. When you're ready.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Worthen?
Yes.
And then motion to authorize filling the animal control position.
Okay, motion and second. It's after roll call.
Okay, Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Worthen?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll get you some help.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I ran out of gas on the other day. I felt so bad.
So now we can jump back up to item number seven. This is our CFO month report. Say we've got special guests with us.
He promised to be short.
Yes, I'll give you a break. I'll give you a break from Russ for a week. Keep it short. CPI came out at three and a half percent, which is a little bit of a decrease from last month, so we'll see whether that sticks or not. We're getting closer to the Fed's 2% target, so we'll see if maybe they don't increase rates anymore, but remains to be seen. I don't know what's going to happen with it. But working through our own financials, general fund side, we took a little bit of a hit on sales tax this month. We already have the numbers for Octobers, and so we came in at $228,000 for November, which is a little bit down, well down from this time last year. We're down 10% year-to-date over last year. Use tax, I know Russ mentioned it last month, but similar situation there, even more drastic. We're down 54% year-to-date over behind last year, which last year I know we had a lot of stuff going on, so we had an abnormally large year in our use tax. So we're probably just getting back more to our normal year, but it hurts to see what we had last year and compare it to this year. But that being said, the good news is we're still looking good compared to budget. Our sales tax, we're coming in at 35%, and at this point in the year, we should be looking at 33, so we're still a little bit up on that. A few things I want to do, talk about, we had nothing major really in the general fund. We had a mower repair. We had a handicap door repair. Nothing, nothing that really sticks out. You can see that our year-to-date, we have net loss currently, mostly due to our transfers out to the PFA, so that doesn't concern me too much. And then we can just briefly talk about PMA, and this is a much better story. Our revenues look awesome. Our electric's down a little bit, and our water's down a little bit, but that's to be expected with the change of season, so I'm not concerned about those at all, and we already have strong numbers in those. You can see our water revenue is so strong. We have received the OWRB grants, and then we received a bond in the sewer revenue this last month, so those look great. We're recording a pretty great operating income, even better than we expected, and it all brings it down to our net income, which is well above what we expected, and I'm sure there's transfers in and out to come, primarily to the general fund. But our PMA revenues are looking awesome. So, if anybody has any questions, I'll take them. Overall, looking good.
All right. Russ told us to take it easy, so.
Yeah, don't ask it any harder.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, which is consider to approve employer benefit program application. The change from Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Blue Preferred Network to the Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Blue Options for City of Perry Employee Insurance Programs and authorize a total aggregate additional payment of $16,262.10 from designated funds. Christie, do you want to explain our changes a little bit, or?
Well, what we, with the increase into state-in-network with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, it was. They, instead of just doing the employee and then the family benefit, we decided to split it out. Me and Russ had talked it out, and in order to make it fair across the board with the increase, we went with employee, employee spouse, and employee child, and then the family itself. And for the employee, of course, nothing changes there for them. If you have employee spouse benefit, it's only going to go up about $26. If you have the employee child, your premium's going to go up an additional $22.94. And the family is the one that's going to hit it the most, and it's going to go up an additional 60. Where everybody was paying $145 every paid period out of each check, it's now going to go up to, the employee spouse will be $170.95. The employee child will go up to $363, and then the families will be the $444, so.
But everybody appreciates what the council does for, for the city, paying for the employees' premium and paying a portion of the employees' dependent premium. This has been presented to the unions, and although, you know, it does go up, they understand it and have accepted it, so everyone's just happy to be able to stay with Blue Cross, Blue Shield. This will allow us to use our local hospital. It'll also provide some other options. There's not, it's not of huge advantage when you consider, you know, the two plans. There's not probably the amount of benefits that you'd hope you get by paying that additional premium, but you can use the local hospital, which is good.
And local doctors.
And the local doctors, and everyone, I'm telling you, of the employees really appreciate the council in doing this. And what we've done by breaking it out, we've made it fairer to those that may only have a spouse or may only have children, and place the, you know, the burden where, you know, based on the number of dependents, which is only fair. So the city isn't paying any of that additional cost, any dependent extra cost, but they are picking up a portion relative to the employee. Which is, you know, quite frankly, it's only for a half a year, but, you know, we were very, very pleased to see it come in and just, you know, shade over $16,000. We were, if you remember Russ's number, he was thinking would be substantially more than that, so we're pleased with the way it turned out.
I think historically, we've had a pretty good benefits package, and I still think even after this change will be one of the better meetings, probably, as far as I guess.
Well, I know, even one of the fire union when they were in, they stated that they, we've had the other ones, and they weren't very happy, and Blue Cross and Blue Shield, everybody has been extremely happy that we were staying with Blue Cross.
Yeah, if the unions were here, their collective bargaining units, they would, they would encourage you to approve this. They were invited tonight, but that was both of their statements.
I'll make a motion to approve the employer benefit program application change.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Your thoughts, your questions? Say nothing. It's after roll call.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Worthen?
Yes.
Thank you all.
All right, item number nine, consider canvas of bids for the DWSRF project number P40-1021206-02 for replacement of water line at the BNSF railroad crossings. Award bid to the Lone Hickory Cattle Company has lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $868,730. Authorize mayor to execute the public construction contract with the lowest responsible bidder after receipt of executed contract, insurance, bonds, and power of attorney as approved by the city attorney.
We had six contractors show up at the pre-bid, and one of them turned in the bid. A lot of people frown away from working and having to go under the railroad, and so that is what Coe said was probably the biggest deterrent from getting people to actually bid on it, so.
But the good thing is that because they were at the mandatory bid meeting, you would figure, unless there was collusion, which we don't believe, you know, everybody thought that there'd be more than one bid, which means that the bidder that bid made his bid competitive. And although it is more than the engineer's estimate, Matt Coe was comfortable with the amount given everything else in the market right now. This Lone Hickory is out of Tallahena, and they're a four-generation company. This is no, you know, no startup company. They've been around for a long time. They've done work for Mr. Coe and other projects, and, you know, if you decide to do this, this will be a quality project. You do have this money in your, in the budget, and you could see how much money we have left that can be used for this, so I think you're in good shape if you want to do it.
This is the final piece to finish the water project that we've already.
And this company, they've been a contractor for four generations?
Yeah, that's what, that's what Matt Coe says, yes.
The name of the company throws you off, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, I know.
All addressed the elephant in the room, the Lone Hickory Cattle Company.
Out of Tallahena.
I had to look at it twice when I was finding out with that.
But they were a group that Matt said that he recognized out of all the bidders that came. So he's worked with them before. They had that cattle company thing. Stranger kind of throws, yeah, yeah.
Shouldn't be putting water lines on your home.
I know.
So there are other costs there, right? See, on that last page, there's, I'll take it to the last. I get to the last. There are some other costs that aren't included in that number, correct? And that's the portion that we'll have to come up with?
Yeah, that is the cost of the construction contract. There is, of course, let me find that real quick.
It looks like $868. Is that it? Put one here. Yeah.
Yeah, there's engineering staking.
Yeah, so it's about $111,000 more, right?
I think, I think that's correct. $111,000, that's what I see. But, you know, we do have remaining DWSRF funding of $437,531. We have a million dollars that we've, that we've set aside for, for that and the roof project. And the roof project is at, you know, estimated at, first, those plans aren't done yet, but the estimate's $250,000, so.
So that, that million dollars that we have there isn't included in this budget worksheet?
This is just showing the.
Yeah, I don't see that in there. I was just saying, is that, am I speaking right in that?
Right, they don't have the million dollars on there.
Right.
That they've set aside.
Have we set aside part of that for something else already?
It's been discussed.
We talked about it. I don't think we ended up needing to.
Used different ways.
The roof, the.
The roof, yeah.
That was the initial reason why we got them in.
Yeah, we were going to do a million-dollar roof and we've cut that to.
Two to three hundred?
Yeah. $300,000. So, I mean, technically you have a million dollars plus $400 and. Or $400 and.
Thirty-seven.
$37,531. And you need to do an 800. Well, but you've got that $111,000. You're right, you've got to add that back.
Well, I'm just saying, if the.
So it's close to a million dollars plus, you know, $300,000. I mean.
If we still have that million dollar, that full million dollars left to.
Yeah, I don't know.
We can still, it still looks like you give people projects and that.
Yeah, if you look at the very bottom of that, it says local funds. So that's the total that we'd be having to put into it.
I don't remember, if we, if we used it for something, we would have used it for the hospital project.
I think we discussed it on that. But we also discussed it on this.
This scenario.
But we haven't, we haven't ear-tagged it. To my knowledge, I don't think we've ear-tagged it for anything.
Right.
We said that we had it set aside that we could use it for the different things when we were talking about the hospital and the different projects that we would maybe have to cut into quick to happen.
Yeah, I think there was a couple other ones that we even said we could.
So this.
But we haven't ear-tagged it for any of them.
So we've got a million dollars set aside that's not in these numbers in here. So the total funds that we would be putting in would be that $842,000. So we would put a million dollars and cover that and then we'd have a little bit left over.
Well, we'll put in, we'll put in this, what we have left, what we have left from the DWSRF, $437,531.
They have that on there.
Yeah, that's, that's in that.
They have it in there.
Yeah, and then plus, yeah, you guys. Hey, I'm not, I'm not the numbers guy. You guys are the numbers guy. But it looks to me like there's sufficient money. But, but don't trust me.
That's your side.
Because I'm not the numbers guy.
We're all looking at you. If it budget is there, that's what I'm telling you.
So is it there for the roof then?
Yeah. For that.
Depending upon which number we.
The water department roof, right? The water base.
Yeah, $300,000 for the roof. And then, and then it was to be used towards this project. That, that's where I thought it was. Now, that's an estimate. Those plans and specs haven't been put out yet. We don't know what, you know, what that'll look like. But it is just a roof repair.
Right. Right. And Matt's got that included in the, in the estimate. He's got the line-one construction, the $868,730. And then he has the roof repair, estimate at $250. And there's built in there as well.
So I guess.
So the million should have been probably figured in there as well.
Right, right. But the million's not in there.
Right.
Roughly, well, after, after doing both projects, in this equation, you'll have about $150,000 left.
Yes, yeah.
From doing both, both projects.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have motion and second. Let's have roll call.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Russ.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes.
All right. Item number 10. Consider Approval of Ordinance Number 2023-17, Amending the Zonium from its current zonium from C2 General Commercial District to RG Residential District for the north 65 feet of the west 40 feet of Lot 15 and the north 65 feet of Lot 16 in Block 64 in the townsite of North and West Perry, County of Noble, State of Oklahoma, and with a street address of 6227th Street, Perry, Oklahoma. 73077, repealer, savings, severability, and declaring emergency.
This is a follow-up from.
From the last one. Then we had the misprint. Or it was on there twice.
But we had the reunion hangover, reunion hangover or something. So I'm motion to approve.
Second.
Let's have roll call.
There's some truth in that.
Okay, Cold Iron.
Yes.
Russ.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes.
Motion for emergency.
Second.
Okay. Then roll call when you're ready.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Russ.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
Maury.
Yes.
Sounded funny. Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes.
I've been told many things, that still makes sense.
All right. Item 11. Consider Approval of Application for Payment Number 10 in the amount of $54,569.33 to Wind Construction Company Incorporated for the Perry Water Systems Improvement Project.
How many of these payments do we have?
Should be getting pretty close.
Yeah, the final one won't be done until after the generators are in. And the last hired was December, February. One of them's in December and the other one's in February. And this one was after they went over some more of the, to verify, to make sure all the parts that were used were actually used and the kind of that.
Yeah, that balance to finish numbers is on the, is on the application. Balance to finish plus retaining. So, and that is the generators as well.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Motion to approve payment number 10.
Second.
All right, the motion's second. Let's have roll call.
I can speak English today. Cold Iron.
Yes.
Russ.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown. Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes.
All right. Item number 12. Discussion of Use of Wise Building as Street Department Building and Related Matters. Direction, action as desired. Sammy, do you want to take the lead on this one?
I'm sure. So shortly after I was elected, we received a video of the building and it was leaking a lot of water. And since then, it's just been on my mind about, you know, winter coming and us not doing anything. Before it gets too bad, I wanted to get this on here and get the conversation started. I mean, I'm not sure if the Wise Building is the answer, but we need to talk about it and figure something out.
I think we were waiting on numbers on the roof repair, which we had found.
Not for that building.
Not for that building.
We were going to ask.
We were going to ask.
I did. And actually, those two roofs, the police and the fire, are now on their schedule. And so when he comes to town, he's going to give us a quote for the other building as well, for the Wise Building.
Nice.
Why won't that be?
He said that we're kind of booked right now, so he wasn't real sure on the date. But he would get back with me. I haven't heard anything else from him.
But in the meantime with that, what are your guys' thoughts about having the street department use the Wise Building?
I think it's a great use of that stuff.
I've talked to Critter about that before. And so one thing is they, they kind of don't want to move from where they're at. But we know that that's just, that it's probably just not possible not to do that. The other thing was for their bigger trucks, they didn't think that the bays in this building were going to be big enough to set up the lifts. That's why some of the lifts that are in the back are just deconstructed and laid in the back there. But if that would give us most of what we needed and we could figure out a way, even if we had to build a bay that that's all that bay was for, I think we could still facilitate that there. And then we could actually get off of that property and we could repurpose a building that otherwise has not been used.
Right.
I do, I do think if I recall correctly, and we need to ask, I think it was when you went through it, Randy. Chris said that the, if there was a door near the back of the main part of the building on the west wall, that that would also accommodate the height. I mean, if we put a tall door in there, then they could put that bigger lift in and use, use the building that we have without having to build another one. But either, either way is, I think, a good option to get, to accommodate.
And even if it is just temporary.
Right.
You know, within our three-to-five-year plan, we can figure something out, hopefully.
Right. We've got, just on the other side of that building, we've got all that property as well. It's just grass right now.
The beat's building on their building.
Right.
Yeah.
And on the other hand, I mean, we've been talking about this a lot. At least that's showing the community that we would like to revive some things and repurpose some things and manage our money better. In our, in our space at that point, you know.
Right.
And a better work environment for our employees.
Yeah.
Right. Just put them all close together. Because then you've got the fire department, police department, you know, the street department. They're all just right there.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was, I do believe he had a number from a year to ago on that building as well, from a different company, I think.
I think from a local one.
Is that, I don't know. I guess, should we prioritize getting a number even if that other company can't make it out? But we've kind of canvassed a little bit.
Yeah. And do we have like a ballpark?
Two, two years ago or a year ago, I think it was 16. Something like that.
I was thinking 14.
Yeah, I thought it was 14.
14, okay, 14.
So.
But it's still.
Maybe 20.
Right.
Swing me.
It's still within the, I mean, it's not bad. You know, to get that fixed up.
It's not a five-year-old building.
No, no, yeah, yeah.
But that's still the roof, correct?
Yes.
Right.
I mean, when I walk through that building, it needs a whole lot more than a roof.
Yeah.
But that's a start.
And it still needs a whole lot less than where they're at right now.
Yeah.
Well, but I guess what I'm getting at is we've, is, is an opportunity to put parks and streets together in the same building. Could we still.
In the armory.
Right.
Because we have a lot of space in the armory.
There's some things that we could do to consolidate without having another old building to maintain. And the back roof on that building drained in instead of off the back. I mean, I don't, I don't know that we're not just getting ourselves into a. I think it pays to go ahead and get an estimate on what it would cost to fix it. But I'm not ready to designate it yet as the place that we're going to move somebody. It just doesn't seem smart at this point.
The only thing that I still questioned was, you know, basically all the lean-tos around that property that hold equipment. You know, if we're going to completely move out of that facility.
I don't think we'll, I don't think we'll completely move out.
Because we own, we own that.
This is what we own, pardon me.
Where their, you know, where the street department is, where their office is at that building, that's not ours. That's, that's Charles M. Juretor.
That anyways. What about the bus barn? Is it?
That's the most.
Okay.
If you walk out of their office and go about 10 to 20 feet to the west and you were to look north and south, everything west of there is ours.
Yeah.
So you talked about a door. I hadn't accommodated for a door at the Wise Building. Would that be the case at the part, at the armory?
Probably.
Oh, you would have to modify the door.
It's most likely.
You need to remember one other thing. The site plan for Seth Wadley has been approved. They're going to be, the road is, two-way road is getting real close. They're going to be building that board facility there. And although they have an option to, to buy it, you know, if, if we want that building back, at least from Jared, and talking to Jared, that Seth Wadley downtown facility is ours and has, you know, some fine buildings and a brand-new roof. It was brand-new. I say brand-new and years go by, you know. But, you know, it's, it's fairly new. Metal roof. And there's some of the other buildings. There's the yard and all of that. Now, I don't know that that's really what you might want to do, but it's something that you own. And it's something that's very nice. And it's got good heat, air, roof, it doesn't have mold, you know, and it's going to be coming back to you. So in keeping with what Randy said, well, what all of you have said, you know, fixing a building to at least make a use of it is better than letting rain pour in. I mean, demolish it or use it for something, certainly. But this opportunity, you know, there, and then of course, looking at repurposing the, you know, the armory perhaps, is of course, you know, other options. So you've got, you've got other options without nice options, you know, that are coming, without having to spend, you know, a lot of money. So.
Well, what I like about that particular piece of property is that if, as you try to revitalize downtown, there's a piece of property that's one block off of downtown,
Right.
that if we're just using it to store stuff, or it could be sold to somebody and have revenue generated.
Well, the armory does have lots of space.
They have a lot of space.
It was purchased at the time, by the city at the time that the property was selected as the jail. And, you know, if you're going to put all those millions right there, and you can acquire, I think we paid a hundred thousand dollars for it. And it's a nice piece of property, and we did use it. So it was a great purchase. And owning that property there, we've used it for parking, and they used it for maintenance. That's where the maintenance on all the equipment was done, for when we had in-house maintenance, that's where it was done. So it's a good purchase, and it's a great piece of property. That's why we bought it in thinking, and it was kind of thinking about a campus, you know, that that would be fire department, police department, kind of a campus, but.
You're talking about over here.
Yeah, over here, yeah. I mean, that's what it was thought, but, you know, whether, I don't, it wasn't thought much more than that, except, you know, to spend all that money right there, you want to have the property right next to it. I mean, that's what you do. So, and we have made use of it. So.
So do we need to do anything to authorize Christie to go see bids for a roof on that?
We can bring this back to the next meeting, if that's what you want.
Yeah, I for sure think we should continue the conversation. Otherwise, nothing will get done.
I'd rather see it repaired than keep going down the hill.
Yeah, before it falls down, that's a nice store, and it's, we don't want a nice store where people go, by the way, the city owns that.
Right. And even if we do part ways with that property, you know, we can talk to Main Street and talk to, you know, kind of, as we're looking, doing our strategic planning, talking about downtown district and what we want it to look like, you know, what sort of uses could that space become?
I mean, if we wanted to stay there and be an historic building or anything, we need to take care of it ourselves.
Yeah, right. Before we, yeah. All right.
Stop the bleeding, says Tom.
Any other discussion on that?
I mean, other than the quotes for the roof, what do you guys want to do for the street department to move them, just?
I was gonna.
I mean, is Toro given any ultimatums yet to get out of the building? Are they not going to, or are they?
I don't know that part. I just know that, you know, we've been told that we need to move out. However, my concern is the weather.
Or are they right now two years, over that time when they told you?
We've already been told to get out.
We're basically water's force.
I'd rather be, I'd rather voluntarily move out than to come to that and have a bad relationship with them. Because I feel like we're already pushing that just by being there that long afterwards.
And even though it's just temporary, I mean, it just.
Right, like, that's what I mean, like, at least get them a temporary place, that's.
Well, I know me and Critter talked about it, you know, it's long ago. I understand we don't have the money for any facility, and I say, well, just need to get you something temporary.
Right.
Right.
And then maybe we could budget, save enough to build a building or do something different.
And talk to Noda and see what kind of, if they, they're usually pretty, easiest ones to get your infrastructure. The other ones are not so much, or economic development.
I think we're.
There could be other grants out there as well.
In my mind, we're getting ready to have two more strategic planning workshops. I think we need to discuss what we want to do with that in relationship to all the buildings that we may end up with.
Is there, is there an idea that, or I guess, could we ask the staff to come up with maybe an idea of the possibility of moving into the armory, if they have a plan to arrange things in there to?
Have them go look at it and see.
To see what they could come up with that would work for both departments?
I think that doors on the armory were the same problem as the doors here, have those particular.
That was for the fire department more than the street department.
We've been talking about the need of the building that they're in right now, because right now it's just a, when we walk through it, you've got Critter's office, their break room, so to speak, or like, meeting area, and then.
Side shop.
Side shop, but, I mean, they can still utilize that side shop, but finding a space where, this, you know, the video that Chris posted was about leaks and.
You know, water running in.
I mean, the sign shop and everything is part of that, but we don't own.
Right.
So, I mean, if we're vacating, we should vacate that entire thing.
It almost makes you wonder if it would be good for for parks and streets to maybe even switch places, because there's more than enough room for all of your loan equipment and everything else in this building over here. And there's a lot more room at the armory, which means they could still have their signs, and, I mean, they pretty much have everything they need inside there.
Parks was here.
That was parks before the roof failed.
So they couldn't be, I don't know, like, I mean, I know for a temporary fix, but it wouldn't fit together forever, I mean.
It's a possibility, I don't know.
Just curious how, I mean, the building seems pretty good to me.
Right. And there's that whole other side that has all the offices.
We're not using.
Right.
Well, I mean, we do have recycling in there right now.
We're talking about even further south. I mean, the roof doesn't leak, but the interior it need work. Where the restrooms and offices, where the commander's office was and.
Well, I was talking garage space.
Well, you know, they're not going to need a whole lot of garage space, at least turning on, because.
Right, it's need more office.
I mean, one of the advantages of that big building would be is, you know, can you get your salt equipment out of the weather? Can you, some of your more sensitive equipment, can you get it completely out of the weather instead of leaning to? I think there's some real opportunities to make our equipment last longer by getting completely in a building instead of just leaning to. Yet we still have all that capacity out there for what we needed to put. Locked in a building is more secure even than a fence.
Right.
So we're saying drop the maintenance part right now, don't even consider that, just consider the.
I'm just saying make it a possib, make it, see if they have any possibilities of where they can make it fit in the armory, you know, with at least, at least the stuff that they have in the current building that they're in.
Right.
The sign, whatever they need from their current building.
Break room, offices, and sign shop.
Yeah.
Concrete forms and wood shop.
Woodwork and shop.
Yeah, too.
Right.
And then drop maintenance for now, as part of the conversation.
I mean, I think having two options at this point, I mean.
So I thought maintenance is what we were talking about, what do you?
I'd be able to put a vehicle lift in, and lift a truck up. Fleet maintenance on it. That was the, that was one of the draws to this building over here, was.
Right. It's already shut up. And they do use it for maintenance.
Right.
On their smaller trucks in there already. But as a temporary spot, you know, for the winter with the weather coming in.
Yeah. I mean, they could still utilize it over here if they needed to, just until we can get a better solution.
You know, if you get them in, if you figure out how to get what they currently, their current situation, get them out of that into this building, I think they might be able to figure out a way to maybe even move the maintenance part over there as well. And once they kind of rearrange things and think about it, maybe, maybe not, I don't know, but it just seems like we realize it's such a smaller.
That garage, I mean, that Seth Wadley has comes open, to be able to consider that as a permanent thing, right?
Right.
Me, that would be ideal, though. Over there.
If we drop maintenance, that would make it a whole lot easier to do that move right now. Continue maintenance here.
I will call him tomorrow.
It may be even, I mean, it may be worth it just to do maintenance for everything in one building. I mean, it'd be easier to, it'd be easier to keep inventory of what you have, you know, at least, you know, all of your oil and your filters, and, I mean, like, everything in one building.
I think that was, at least for vehicles, that was what they did at one point, right?
And it was.
And tire machines are in there.
Maybe we should have the department head go and take a look at it and consider it, and come back and report to us, and give us his thoughts and his ideas, and talk directly with him. I think it's really good to include them when you're trying to make decisions for the department.
Yep, I agree with Sean. They just knew that they can't stay where they are.
Right.
That's not an option.
She said, yeah, she said she just didn't, she just knows they just can't stay where they're at. It's not an option.
Right. Go do talk to Chris, then.
Yes.
Let's have him come in on our next meeting. Everybody comfortable with that? Let's go on to item number thirteen. Approve the prep contract, one nine two seven seven, prep twenty-three, with the Oklahoma Department of Commerce providing five hundred twenty thousand dollars, six hundred thirty-seven dollars, to be used to construct a sewer line to the one three one point five acre commercial slash industrial park located on the southwest corner of Interstate thirty-five and Highway seventy-seven. So with this, we found out that we have, that we had a grant that was ready to go, and all it needed was a signature. There was a grant application placed how long ago?
In May.
In May. That we didn't know about, and we got a call from them saying, hey, we needed to sign on this grant, you guys got approved for it.
I got an email that said, you have an open prep grant waiting for a signature, and I went, huh? And before I could sign in, Marita Parkhill calls and says, you know you have a grant? And I was like, no, I just got an email. She says you have a five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, six hundred, well, six hundred thirty-seven dollar grant. And I was like, okay. And so she signed in and looked at, because she was already in, and that's all she saw. Clicked on City of Perry, and she was like, um, Christie, and she called Bryce, Bryce. It was kind of crazy, but apparently, Coe and Larry, Larry, Coe had gave him some numbers, and then Larry turned this in. It was a very simple application for a grant. I actually printed out, and y'all have a copy. This is the simplest application for a grant I've ever seen.
With that large amount of money.
Yeah. And there wasn't a whole lot to it. But I talked to Jared at the Oklahoma Department of Commerce. He says it will be very simple once it gets going. Not a lot to do, just kind of a spreadsheet that I work for, too, that this is where we're at on the construction or whatever is going on. Yeah. So, thanks, Larry.
Yeah, this is nice, because this is going to help us get sewer to the big property that we have over along I-35. Which is, I mean, even like, earlier this week, we were, you know, before we got this, we were talking about how are we going to, how are we going to finish, you know, that property, getting all the utilities to it? And the big one was sewer, and then we have this grant falling around.
This line will get us to, to the property. It gets us under the, under the road, never to the other side.
It's actually coming down Thirty-second, so.
So it's tied in there by that pond?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Going south across the highway.
This pond, so here's, see here? The pond up here down Thirty-second Street.
Okay.
So it's going to come from there and right across the street, across the highway.
So there's existing sewer here, and we're going in this direction. So it doesn't have to cross that thirty-five?
No.
Correct.
Right. And so if sewer didn't put in over to that property, that we'll now have water, electric, and now we'll have sewer over there.
The only thing we won't have is the sewer that goes from
Right.
beginning of the property through the property.
Right.
Into it. I think Coe's got that at maybe another seven hundred and fifty thousand.
In fiber.
In fiber.
Fiber stuffed up out there, too.
Right.
And so, I guess I'm assuming that it's, no matter what gets built or developed out on that quarter, this is enough sewer pipe to handle it?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to get a lot easier to press the start market and using that property.
And the grant will cover what percentage of the cost?
Whole?
All.
All of it.
Well, if you add the construction contingencies, there's still, as it points out, a hundred and twenty.
Oh, was there?
Yeah, a hundred and twenty. Excuse me, let me see, yeah. No.
Oh, that includes his construction contingency.
Yeah, that included everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I was, I was burnt over the same thing.
So we're approving, or could be approving, the grant tonight?
And Oklahoma Department of Commerce has signed the contract now.
With the contractor?
No, just getting the money.
This is just the grant to get the money.
We'll still have to go up for bids and.
So it may, may or may not be equal to.
Correct.
Yeah.
Don't know.
Still seems hard to pass up.
Oh, yeah. I mean. Yeah, even if it didn't cover it all, that's five hundred thousand dollars that we didn't have before.
Well, we have an estimate that it's going to get close.
Right.
I don't think we've moved forward on them.
Yeah. Okay. There's a motion, and there's a second. Let's have roll call.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Or them. Yes.
This is, if I recall, this is the first year this was in existence, right?
Yes.
I'm anticipating doing it next year. I did send a memo out today. I emailed, I think, to Derek and to you. You can send it to the council really talking. I spoke to Jared, and he says, you know, get with your legislature, legislator, and talk about putting more money. This is state money, so it's simple. We're not putting any of the, all the requirements from federal government, look for Indian bones and dinosaur bones, and buy American iron, and, you know, all of it. None of that's in here, so. You know, we should, we should thank our legislators and encourage them to do this again. And we should be ready to file for it again.
Because if we want to continue that sewer line through the property.
Yes.
Again, we go for this again, then we cover the rest of it next year, or in the next grant. So moving along, item fourteen, discuss advertising the position of city manager for the City of Perry, and approve the advertisement and job description. Do we have any questions on?
I read, I had several questions that it all answered before about it finished, so I thought it was a little, was that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have motion and second.
Do we want to discuss at all the next steps after this, or say that later, on file, your way?
Thoughts on that? Yeah, it's just to get it posted.
Next meeting, we have more of a discussion of what we want to do with the applications, if we've gotten any.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know that posting it means that we have to fill in a certain amount of days or whatever.
No, no, no. Yeah, this is just to start getting it, getting it going.
We should expect that people will want a response timely.
Right.
When they apply for it.
Right.
Though, it was all.
I believe we talked about having this, I mean, we can start posting immediately, we start December first.
I just want people to realize that even though we want to do that in a timely manner, does not mean we want to rush that.
Right. Okay. Yeah, we had a motion, we had a second. So with that, let's have a roll call.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown, Ms. Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Or them.
Yes. All right, it's getting to item fifteen, so we already took care of that. Item sixteen, is there any new business? Item seventeen, consider convening into executive session to confer on a matter pertaining to the economic development of the City of Perry to discuss the preparation of a proposal to help induce a sales tax retail business be established within the Interstate thirty-five corridor, and thereby approve the economic development of the city, as public disclosure of the proposal interfere with the development and implementation of this proposal.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, for roll call.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown and Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Or them.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion to reconvene.
So move.
Second.
All right, roll call when you're ready, Kristy.
All right, Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Or them.
Yes. Okay, item nineteen, take any action with respect to the executive session, including but not limited to approval of an economic development agreement providing for the development proposal and appropriate sufficient monies from a designated source for the economic development.
I'd make a motion to approve the economic development agreement. Second.
And let's just provide that the source will be our city carry for.
So, so.
Okay. I forgot to discuss that. I'm sorry.
We have a motion and second. I'm on roll call. When you're ready, Kristy.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Or them.
Yes. Okay. Last item. Anybody like to adjourn from this meeting?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, roll call when you're ready.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Or them.
Yes. All right, so we do have an item here on the PMA. So let's call a regular meeting for the Perry Municipal Authority, November twenty, twenty twenty-three. Now roll call.
What time, man? Cold Iron.
Present.
Rupp.
Here.
Williams.
Present.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Here.
White.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Aye.
Or them.
All right, we have quorum. Item one, consent agenda.
I wish to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, roll call.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Or them.
Yes. Item two, consideration to approve employer benefit program application. The change from Blue Cross Blue Shield Blue Preferred Network to the Blue Cross Blue Shield Blue Options for PMA employee insurance programs and authorize a total aggregate additional payment of sixteen thousand, two hundred sixty dollars and ten cents from designated funders. Roll call.
Cold Iron.
All right.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams. Brown. Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Or them.
Yep. Anybody want to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
You're ready.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Or them.
Yep. All right. Let's call our next meeting to order for the Perry Facilities Authority, November twenty, twenty twenty-three, with roll call.
Cold Iron.
Here.
Rupp.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Here.
White.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Or them.
Here. All right, item one, consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
And roll call.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Or them.
Yep. And.
I should adjourn.
There you go.
Second.
Roll call.
Cold Iron.
Yep.
Rupp.
Here.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Three more.
Coffee.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Or them.
Yes.